I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let Clerk Caldwell roll, please.
Counselor Bowlin?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Furlough?
Here.
Counselor Reese Kent?
Here.
And Counselor Grizzle is absent this evening.
Thank you. Any corrections or additions to the previous minutes from October 8 in regular session and October 22 noon session? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the council minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The minutes are approved. Next up is the consent calendar. We have the agenda, the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Board, Library Advisory Committee, and Mayor's Youth Council Board Minutes.
I move for approval.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar passes. Next up is, under our presentations tonight, we have the annual risk report for fiscal year 2013-14 presented by Steve Yearlings from Barker Yearlings Insurance.
So you've all were introduced to Steve through our work session. Again, for some reason, this apple does not like his presentation. So, in your books, you'll find, the presentation is in your books, if you'd like to follow along there. We also have, if the audience want to see, the book note, far aside, the book we're talking about. It's our risk report for insurance. So, Steve, go ahead.
Thank you all for having me do this today. We'd like to give you kind of a five-year overview of your insurance. Starting off on page one, this is a five-year summary of the types of coverages that the city of Lebanon has. Starting out with the property insurance. City County provided a property appraisal for insurance purposes during the 2013, 12-13 to 13-14 year. That's why the values significantly increased from the 57.9 million to the 71.3. Most of the increase had to do with water and wastewater treatment facilities being rated higher for the reconstruction costs. During that period of time, we also, because of the premium increase, increased the deductible for the city from a $2,500 deductible to a $5,000 deductible. The city carries a $10 million limit for earthquake and a $5 million limit for flood coverage. Going on farther, you have mobile equipment. This covers any of the public works or parks' equipment out in the city. Boilermachinery, or we commonly refer to it as equipment breakdown coverage, to cover any of the equipment in the facilities. You have crime coverage of $100,000. Tort liability limit of $5 million. It's a $25,000 current deductible for any claims during the policy period. It's not a per claim deductible, it's an aggregate deductible. So the city's on the hook for the first $25,000 of claims, and then CIS pays for everything over that. Auto liability, auto physical damage, and then we have public official bonds for the city manager and finance director. A volunteer accident policy to cover the volunteers and have them taken off of workers' comp coverage. And then a underground storage tank pollution policy to cover at public works as well. So, getting on the claim side, the next page on two, you have not had a property claim the last five years. It's been, you know, very steady from that standpoint. And the premiums have been escalating primarily because the value increases. Page three shows you the premium versus the claims you've had in the last five years. You've had kind of an up and down series of claims. The highest year was the 2010-11 year, where you had two claims totaling the $206,000. One claim was in police, and one claim was in public, or water, public works. Those part, it's pretty common, the claims that you've had under the tort liability have been sewer backup related, police related, and employment practices related, which is pretty common for a city your size to have public works be the driving factor of most of your claims. Really, your history with the police, for a city your size, has been great. When you take a look at the number of claims against the police department, it's fairly low compared to most cities your size, which is great work. Again, page four kind of shows you, you know, there's one claim for the police department that incurred the most of losses, and then public works made up the balance of the other claims during this five-year period. Under auto liability, your fleet has done stellar, you know, when you consider how many miles your number of vehicles put out every year. It's been a great loss record. You have very few losses. In fact, in the five-year period, you've had only four claims that were paid out. One in police, two in public works, and one in transit. Again, for the amount of miles you guys put on, it's really a great, great record.
Steve, what is the reason for the big jump this year, 2013-14?
It's, city-county went through a big increase this last year. Their rates, both last year, 2012-13 to 14, and then again, 14 to 15. Their rates are going up statewide about 15% to 20% every year. And so that was the big jump. It wasn't based on your history, it was just based on, they're looking at the rate filing and took a jump that year.
Does that have to do with CIS's reserve going down?
It's primarily, again, CIS is a pool, so what they have is they have actuaries to estimate how, you know, what their total liability claims are going to be in an annual period of time. And they kind of divide it by the types of vehicles that cities have. So there's a separating for private passenger, separating for police, separating, you guess you don't have fire, but fire truck. So they, the actuary determines those rates going in. And they were seeing that the number of claims that they're having statewide was increasing, so they increased that set pool rate. Given that pool rate, you get a credit based on your experience. So you didn't pay the full rate that you would have paid if your experience would have been, you know, poor. So you are getting a discount, but some cities have some pretty significant injuries, and the rates went up statewide.
Thank you.
The page six shows, again, the claims you had. One police, two public works, and one transit claim. Again, very, very few claims, and you're hurried for the activities that you have. The physical damage unfortunately has not been as kind to the city of Lebanon you had. And the police department had the most claims during this period of time. They got a total of seven claims during that period of time, and public works had three. The biggest one was a, in the 2010-11 year, you totaled a police vehicle for that $28,000. That was the biggest claim. Most of the others were backing incidents where police were responding and couldn't properly look out for adapt. And that's more common than you think. Not just Lebanon's police force, it's statewide police force. They're in a hurry, and they sometimes make those mistakes. Page eight, again, when you take a look at the, the amount of the claims, again, police because of the one total loss makes up the bulk of the fight quite far. Public works had two claims. Page nine kind of, you know, shows you by year, a typical number of claims or average in the prior year. You had eight claims. Total average was 67,000 feet out. Average 8,000 per claim. Then down below, as far as liability type, auto liability, average claim was $1,500. Auto physical damage was $8,000. Your liability was $57,000. Again, overall, your claims averages are under what more, what other cities your size have in the pool. You've done a great job in five years. Page 10.
What question?
Sure.
The, you're using a five-year calculation here. Is, does CIS use that as a five-year risk?
Maybe a three-year.
A three-year.
For their experience.
Most recent three years?
Well, three, well, they lag a year and go back three years. So they won't use the current 2013-14 that just ended, they use the prior three years. Just, which is similar to what workers' compensation does, or what that now. Because if you did anything more recent, it hasn't been adjudicated, it usually hasn't been settled out, so it's too new to really use that experience when you take a look at losses. Most of it's in reserves, and they just don't feel it's fair to base your rates on what reserve is on the client, and where they have more information on it, and have to finalize it before they put it into the two-year experience rate.
Have you, just one more follow-up question. Have you done any comparison, since we've had several high claims in the 10-11 year, what that is likely to look like when that high year drops off?
Yeah, it's, you're probably going to be equated to, it's probably going to flatten out, because what we're seeing is that claim, your experience is going to get better, but the rates are still jacking up in the rate filing. So we don't see that, unfortunately, it's not going to make a significant impact in the budget. It's going to be, your premiums are more likely to flatten out because of that than to go down. Workers' compensation, you know, it's kind of, you take a look at your history, it's been very well, except for one severe claim that you had in that 2010-11 year. That claim is still ongoing, and unfortunately, that really skewed your whole district of city-county. Because of that claim, your experience mod, which is the standard of most private carriers look at for your, how well you're running, your experience mod did go up in the 12-13 year, went to 1.5. Before that, you were, had great experience of under 1.0, which is typically low-run firm. CIS was going to be increasing your rates during the 13-14 year, over $260,000. We're taking about $100,000 increase. We went out to State Corporation and were able to replace your workers' comp with safe for $100,000 savings. And CIS was given the last shot, you know, the last opportunity to save the effort, and they said, you know, they didn't want to do that, so we moved it to State Corporation. State has done an excellent job, you know, your claims have actually gone down the last two years, the first year was two. I think it was a good move to move from CIS to State Corporation, where your workers' compensation are actually benefiting, receiving a favorable rating. The rating will start going back down in the next couple of years, so it should be better rates for you from a workers' compensation standpoint. The, you know, claim frequency is, you know, pretty much low, what industry standard is. You've been really good from that standpoint. The loss ratio of the last two years has been excellent. Last page, your review is about workers' compensation by department. Police and public works make up the bulk of the losses, and that police number did not include the severe claim, because it just, if we would have put that in, it would have really skewed the numbers, so we kind of took that claim out. Just kind of showed the average claims without that severe loss. Overall, I think your workers' compensation is going to be better. We're working with staff on safety committee issues, trying to get everything up to date and more frequent safety reviews, and I think we'll see kind of results in the future. Dean, any questions?
Steve, I guess only one. Do you perceive the rates, regardless of your performance, obviously, flat would be nice, but I can't get the indication that you're still going to see a tick upwards?
Statewide, it's been, and Dean intends the meetings with the annual meetings, it's just being hit on employment-related issues, police-related issues. Those are still at the forefront statewide. And it's, there's a lot of attorney's fees, a lot of defense work that goes into those types of claims, and the pool is trying to keep, you know, handle a lot of those types of claims, but it's, some of those have just been astronomical in pain. Especially the employment-related claims, as they said in the video, they've had some where, you know, city councils get involved and making employment issues even worse. So it's kind of, you know, sometimes the smaller towns will have worse losses around the state. It's just kind of hard. We're trying to do more education, trying to get out more, so we educate the city councils more on what they can and can't do, and those types are.
And I think the CIS is also working on a program that's going to put some of the surcharge over on those towns that are actually having the claims that have the big losses, so that they'll eat a little bit more of that loss. And then also, they're working to deduct, in other words, they're getting us to use the pre-loss human resources part, advice part. And if you do that, and you follow their instructions, then you waive your, then you don't have to pay the $5,000 deductible. Which those two things, I think, are fairly significant, and I think good, good, good policy.
What was happening was that the entity would call city county for the advice, and then the advice would be overridden by either the local city attorney or by the local city manager. We want to do it anyway. Well, it doesn't help to have the advice there and not go with it. So they instituted that, you know, if you follow the procedure, they'll waive the deductible, although if you don't, they actually increased it to $15,000 now for those types of problems. So they're trying to put some teeth into it.
Thank you, appreciate you also looking at the, moving us away from CIS when it benefited the city. Thank you very much.
We take a look at it every year, because again, you know, the pool is great, but sometimes you have a situation where one claim just affected your performance, but they weren't willing to take another look at it, and you just feel it's never going to make the move. A $100,000 difference is significant in a great city.
So we did not experience a loss of the group rate by moving?
There was a slight difference where, if you're all-in for coverages, you get a discount. And the discount was a 3% discount, which was more than offset. I mean, I think you lost maybe a $6,000 discount and gained $100,000, so it wasn't significant enough to make a report.
Great, thank you. Very good. Okay. Did you have anything, Dean?
Well, that's what I like, is after CIS drove us off, we had zero claims the next year. Got our gold award.
Yeah, I saw that, very good.
We owe them money.
Excellent.
And, you know, to be reasonable. Yeah, we, I appreciate the time. Sorry for the logistics of the video. We'll get that out to you, so you can have it, do a look at it if you want to, refer back to it. And again, if you have any questions, Dean is the man to contact. Go from here.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Because you listened to it, we give $1,000 credit, I don't believe it's here. And there's a few other things that we're working on. They have a bonus to bonus program. So we are working on just a couple that we'll have to work on, so hopefully we'll get those things out, and then get a couple other $1,000 we'll get, so we keep working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, under Presentations, we'll have Wes Hare from the City of Albany, City Manager. Welcome.
Thanks. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and talk a little bit about discussions over the Saniam Canal, which has been an issue, I know, for a long time. Certainly, as long as I've been the city manager in Albany. And secondly, I would like to point out, I am a volunteer, so treat me accordingly here. In talking about the issue, I think through most of the time that I have been in Albany, I have been under the impression that Lebanon was going to stop using the canal for its water intake. We'd been told that at one time by staff. In fact, I think we'd even granted permission for some studies to be done, some test wells dug on City of Albany property. And that seemed understandable to me, that Lebanon would want its own intake. The City of Albany, of course, as you know, partnered with the City of Millersburg to create a separate intake some years ago, that now we jointly use with Millersburg at the confluence of the north and south Saniam. And so, in my mind, I'd sort of thought, well, that's the direction that we're going to go with this, that there's, you know, we're not going to have the same relationship that we had had over the past 30 years, I think going back to 1984. Sometime in the fairly recent past, the two staffs of our public works department have been, begun discussing the need for, or the desire to use the canal as a water intake again. And there's been some back and forth about it, there's been some difference of opinion, which you would expect, and the negotiations had not made a lot of progress. Gary was hired in March. Gary and I go back a long ways. We've known each other since our days in eastern Oregon together, and he came over, very graciously had lunch with me, and we both agreed that, hey, our desire is to try and work this thing out in a friendly way, recognizing that, you know, there's, there are some inherent differences of interests between the two cities, but we think if we're, you know, approach it the right way, we can get past that. And I still believe that. You know, the negotiations have gotten off to a little bit of a rough start, in that I think what we're guilty of, and perhaps your city as well, is doing a little positional bargaining here, where one side says, well, gee, you know, we think, maybe we could justify asking for this much, recognizing that you're going to ask for that much, and that we're both going to move toward the middle. And we haven't seen a great deal of progress in that. In August, we decided, in City of Albany, let's try a different approach. And so I put on the table the idea of an avoided cost study. And that concept is really simple. It really is the same concept that I think you were now talking about, and that you'd kind of decided to do on your own. The idea was, is that you would look at, what would it cost us to have our own water intake, independent of Albany, and what cost do we avoid if we stay with the City of Albany and use the water from the canal? And then you'd have a basis of comparison, if you will. And the original proposal was that we'd both, you know, we'd try and jointly select an engineer to do that study, and then, you know, look at the results and use that as a guide to an appropriate charge for the water intake. Gary apparently brought that idea back, and I think you decided to say, no, you know, we'd rather kind of do that on our own, rather than doing a joint avoided cost. We'll just look at it ourselves. We'll contract with our, with a contractor who I believe has been doing the design work for your water treatment plan, and go that route. And again, you know, I understand that, that's an understandable position for the City of Lebanon. What I proposed, I sort of counter-proposed to Gary after hearing that, was, okay, we understand that. We still have an interest in kind of understanding better both your needs, and we think there might be some benefit for both cities if you understood our needs a little better too. So we have some, what we're thinking is, is that we would propose some additional questions that might not be included in your scope of work, and we would be willing to pay for whatever additional work we ask of your consultant. And the idea was, is that it would, we hoped it would be an expression of goodwill on our part to say, you know, we'll, we'll work with your consultant. We won't go out and hire our own, or we won't do, you know, an RFP for it. We'll just try and tack on to the work that you're doing. Again, with the notion that at the end of it, we'd have a better understanding of each other's position, and a better understanding of the values and costs associated with the use of the canal. That's really as complex as the proposal is, you know, that we'll, we'll listen to one another and have some discussions about the questions that we ask, and whether that information is of any interest to you, you know, but it shouldn't, it wouldn't cost you anything more. It would only provide some more information from your consultant about, you know, some questions that we might have. Now, I haven't seen the scope of work that the City of Lebanon has contracted with Corolo to do, so it may be that your study answers all the questions, in which case, you know, we're in good shape. But if that's not the case, and I suspect it's not, I think there's some additional things that we would probably want to know, we would certainly be, you know, happy to contribute to that and see if we can't reach an agreement. Having said all of that, you know, I believe personally, and I think this is a commonly held belief by the City of Albany, that folks in Lebanon are, you're negotiating in good faith. We believe we're trying to negotiate in good faith. Again, we do have some different interests, but we're pretty confident we can reach some agreement over time, even if that agreement in the end is that we, you decide that, no, we don't want to be taking water from the canal, we want a more, we want more control of our own destiny. And we understand that. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer questions and...
Wes, first of all, thanks for being here tonight. Just for the council to know, Wes and I did talk before he did his presentation, and I told him that although our city council, you, have embarked on the idea of the water intake, and I've seen strong support from all of you to go in that direction, that I always believe that there should be allowances made for discussion and for dialogue, certainly with the City of Albany. I have no problem whatsoever with embarking on the proposal that Wes has put before us. I'm not certain at this point if we reach a solution through that process, but I think it would be a shame not to try. Sometimes there are solutions yet undiscovered that come out of a dialogue like this. So what I'm proposing is that you would authorize me to have this discussion with Wes and our respective teams, knowing that you have endorsed and strongly support the intake of the river. And until such time that we would see some sort of evidence that it was in the city's best interest to do something else, that we certainly would continue that effort to get to the river. But this discussion is the potential door that allows those other solutions yet undiscovered, if they're there, to maybe be discovered. So that's my take on this. I'm prepared to have that discussion, and would be eager to hear what your thoughts are on this.
Comments from council?
Mayor Zize, if I could add one point to this that I wanted to make. Regardless of how it goes in terms of where Lebanon places its water intake, whether you, let's say you decide ultimately that you want to go with your own intake off the river, we still have a canal that runs through your community and is maintained and owned by the City of Albany. And so I think it's valuable for us to have more, and this is something I'll take some blame for. You know, I sort of gave up on the canal, I guess, some years ago, when I was working under the belief that ultimately you weren't going to be using it. But I've kind of had my eyes opened, I've taken a tour of the canal, I've seen what an important asset and amenity it is in the City of Lebanon. And, you know, there are common interests that we have that are independent of the issue of drinking water. You know, you have developments that are sort of built because you have this beautiful amenity in your front yard. We have some similar to that in Albany as well. We have stormwater issues and potentially flooding issues that if we don't maintain this asset properly, it could have a very negative effect on you. And conversely, if there are things that the City of Lebanon does that aren't cognizant of what happens downstream, it could have a bad effect on us. So regardless of how our discussions go in regard to the water intake, I still think there's a need for an ongoing dialogue between the two cities about the management of the canal as an asset.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
No, I would just comment that I, I think that continued dialogue in looking at additional information and answers to help resolve the issue is an appropriate thing to do, and I would support the city manager's request.
I have a somewhat different viewpoint on that, and I got a few questions as well. I personally don't think that this has been, like you said, that the communication has maybe been off a bit, but I have a hard time supporting cooperation with the City of Albany, when I don't feel that the City of Albany has been cooperative at all towards the City of Lebanon. I don't think that the City of Albany has been negotiating in good faith with the City of Lebanon. And the reality of the situation is that we draw 3% of that flow. And I'd be curious to know what the cost would be to Albany for Lebanon to draw a 3% flow off that canal? to know what the cost would be to Albany, for Lebanon to draw a 3% flow off that canal. It costs us upwards of $350,000 a year in maintenance, I know it costs you 660 or more, it's, it's a million dollars to you, that we, we pay 350 or so of. And other than supporting arguably failed hydro project, I, I don't, I don't know. And I'd like to know what you think the cost would be to Albany, for us to take our 3% and stay with, stay within an IGA at this point.
Okay, I'm not sure I understand the, the question completely, but to the extent that I do, I don't believe you have paid $350,000 a year for water from the canal, ever. At least not to my knowledge, it's more, I think the highest amount we've ever received is on the order of $70,000, $77,000 a year, which was an agreement that was worked out jointly between the two Public Works Directors some years ago. And again, that was always regarded as sort of an interim step, with the understanding that City of Lebanon was not going to use the canal into the future.
That's all inference, I mean...
Jason, can I clarify?
Sure.
I, I think where the confusion is, is that Albany has, just in the last few months, begun billing us in a manner that would reach the level that you're suggesting. It is a fact, Wes is correct, we've not been doing that to date, Lebanon, or Albany has seen fit, for whatever reason, to begin billing us according to the IGA, one section of the IGA, IGA, and I'll contend, not the others. And there's a difference of opinion there, and I'm not trying to start something here, but I think that's where the confusion is, is that they're billing us for that now, historically we haven't paid that.
And if I may add, one of the, when we start, prior to starting that billing, we tried to explain, and I don't, maybe we didn't do a very good job of it, that we recognized that we were in negotiations, and we were trying to give what we believed was, in accordance with the historic agreement, a one-third, two-thirds split. I mean, that was the original agreement between the two cities back in 1984, that Lebanon would pay one-third of the cost of maintaining the canal, and Albany would pay two-thirds. Again, we could argue all day about what that number should be or ought to be, but that was, that was the basis for that. As to people's feelings, I'm sure there have been bruised feelings on both sides of the canal, or both ends of the canal, for a number of years. I'm sorry that you don't believe we're negotiating in good faith, we believe we are, and, and again, I believe that for the most part, the City of Lebanon has too, it's just that we always see our own interests much more clearly, because, you know, we're focused on that, that's, hey, we're only taking 3%. Well, actually, the City of Albany, I believe, is currently using less water out of the canal than the City of Lebanon. We have some higher levels of demand in association with the hydro project at certain times, but in general, it's, it's a very small percentage that we take from the canal, because we have, we have another water source that we use. So, there are a lot of different ways to, you know, calculate how much realistically someone should owe, but, again, that's one of the purposes of having the study that we're talking about, is to try and come up with some more rational basis and reasonable basis for making the charges.
So you're saying that Lebanon should carry one-third of the cost of the maintenance?
I'm saying that's what the historic agreement was. Now, I'll concede, I mean, you know, and I, we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that for 30 years, the City of Lebanon, the City of Albany have worked together so that you get water, I don't think you've ever gone a day without water from the canal, so from that perspective...
How does that compare with our usage, though, as far as the percentage?
You know, the honest answer is, I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know the number of gallons that you're currently taking out of the canal, nor do I know the exact number that we're taking out at a given time. Again, our usage fluctuates, depending on what we're doing. There are some months when we do generate some electricity, most months we don't. And when we don't, we're not using very much at all, in fact, I think we're using less than you are.
But Lebanon's not the only one that's using the canal.
Well, there are water, there are a number of requirements for how that water gets used, some of it has to get diverted into Mark Slough, for example, to maintain it at a certain level, and arguably, that's to Lebanon's benefit, but I don't know if you consider that you're using it. You used, have used, I don't know if you're still doing it right now, but you've used water, for example, to raise the level of Cheetah Lake, and you've taken that water from the canal, and again, I don't know if you've considered that as, as part of your usage. There's water that we divert, I think it's into Burkhardt Creek, and, so yes, there are a number of different ways that the number gets used and diverted, but historically, there's been an arrangement that said Albany would cover two-thirds, Lebanon would cover one-third. Now, if we're all in agreement that that doesn't work anymore, then we need to come up with a new way, or perhaps part of the answer is, is that you decide to have your own intake and...
I think we need to get more realistic.
I'm sorry?
We need to get more realistic, I believe, of what, what is going on.
The problem I have, Wes, is that Albany determines what goes on with the canal, because you maintain ownership. So when you say, we want to build, we want to put in new fish screens, and we want to build new dams, and we want to do, put new headgates in, Lebanon's never consulted about that, there's never an adoption to an IGA that's, or an amendment to an IGA that's put into use with that. All Lebanon does is get billed for the additional cost of that, and it's Lebanon's taxpayers who end up footing that bill, whether they like it or not, through increased rates and, and whatnot from our side. We have, we have a big enough problem with water rates as it is, as a council, this council spent the last two years cleaning up the messes of previous councils, and the PR problems we've had from that, and I don't think that we should have to clean up messes from Albany's side of whether it was a hydro plant that didn't pan out the way you thought it was, or whether it's improvements that you decided to make, that now we're going to pay the, we're going to pay the price on that. It's not fair to Lebanon, and it almost feels like it's a strong-arm tactic, that, well, we can do whatever we want, as a matter of fact, Mr. Shepherd made that comment, it's our canal, we can do what we want with it, in a public meeting.
I think Mr. Shepherd's remark was taken out of context.
Take it as you will, that was the comment.
No, I'm said it was taken out of context, and I think its meaning was misunderstood because of that.
You understand the frustration to the citizens of Lebanon, though, and to the council, when we read those comments, or we hear those comments?
Well, part of the problem is, is that we have been conducting our discussions in open session, and because we felt we had no alternative under the law, and so, we don't know what's been said over here, mostly it's been done in executive session.
That's not true, and all of our meetings are on YouTube, and not all of your meetings are videotaped either. And what we've heard, and I'm not trying to point fingers, but what we've heard over here, you know, about Lebanon being flooded and targeted, kind of doesn't sound real good, so that, that's been a problem on both sides, where we've heard these things. And I would really like to see as we go forward, that we eliminate some of this kind of talk, because if your council's really serious about it, I think we would be too, we, we want the best solution, I feel that our city manager and you could come up with a solution. One of the things I have to say, that I was very disappointed in, is the meeting where Gary took a check to pay you from our city, to pay our debt, and basically was accused of some kind of trickery that we were paying the bill, and I did not like hearing that report at all.
Well, again, I was at the meeting, and I'm sorry, but I did not, I did not hear the accusation of trickery. What I heard, for me, and I expressed it to Gary, was Gary, thank you very much for paying the bill. I did hear our attorney raise an issue, and I, you know, we can argue about how he raised it, but he did raise it.
And that's the point I'm speaking of, is the way that we were treated when we went over there to pay the bill, to take care of that, so that we can start off on a clean footing, and negotiate in good faith, and that really, really set the tone for a bad negotiation.
Well, again, I think part of the problem here is, as I say again, each of us looking at our own interests and seeing them very, very clearly, but not necessarily understanding the other person's interests and seeing them quite as clearly. And there were two very different perceptions of that, again, my perception, I was at the meeting, I sat right across from Gary, and I like Gary, he and I have a long, like I said, we have a long-term relationship, I didn't interpret it the same way Gary did, okay? And it's not because I'm trying to, you know, do anything sneaky or nefarious, that's just the way it is, so...
Mayor, yeah, go ahead. I'll let you talk.
I, even though I'm somewhat new to this particular agenda item, I do have some, some concerns and some history of dealing with these kinds of issues. We, as a council, have gone on record, I think, in, in taking action in two particular fronts, which I believe we should continue, and we're the voice of the council at that time, unless it's modified, I believe is the direction. The first one is to get as much information as we possibly can, and I believe that's consistent with the proposal, and Gary's support of that. How we go about getting that information, you know, really is up for professionals to identify how best to get that information. And, and I support Gary's proposal, and, and the, and the Albany request to get that information, because it's, it's crucial for us to, as a council, to understand what the costs are of an alternate water intake, as well as what additional or what ongoing costs parallel to that with the canal are going to be, because they're both a part of a package deal, which needs to be total part of the consideration before any final action is made by this council. The second course that the council seems to have taken, is right now, is to support the idea of, of aggressively pursuing an alternate intake. And I believe personally, that that's an appropriate course for the City of Lebanon, because, for whatever reason, it appears that there are some political considerations going on, outside the ability of the City of Lebanon, either through administration or through the council, to control its own destiny. And I believe that, I believe it would be inappropriate for us to continue to be held hostage in, in a, in a negotiation, in a, in a cost-sharing ratio, that we do not have the ability to control 100% of. Unless that information comes up, which would suggest otherwise. I believe we're, we've taken into consideration the information that's necessary to pursue a course of independent study, and that we need to continue to do. And, and based upon the information that I've received so far, it would appear that it's going to take some time before we have those answers completely. And when we do, then we can make a decision based upon the best interests of the City of Lebanon, that may or may not be in what the interests of Albany are. And frankly, I think we're seated around this table, and have, have our own priorities for the constituents of the City of Lebanon.
Okay, Gary?
I guess I want to address Councilor Furlow, and on all council members, that I've heard you very clearly, and I understand that, that your, your desire is for independent means of acquiring our water for our city, that, that the issues that, I mean, like we're sitting here talking about, provide undue complexity to what should otherwise be a very simple process, you draw water out of some source. So I understand that, I get that, the council's on record authorizing that direction, you're going to, I presume, based on your support of this project so far tonight, you have an amendment to the engineering agreement for the, the water project, to fund that, that process of constructing a water intake from the river. None of that changes if I simply sit down and have a discussion with Wes. None of that changes even if I bring a proposal back to you. The only thing that's going to change is if I bring a proposal back to you, and you all agree that's in the best interest of the City of Lebanon, because that's what your charge is from your electorate, to take care of the City of Lebanon. So I want to assure you that there should be no feeling of a threat by our discussion, if anything, maybe there's a solution there, I can't for the life of me tell you what that solution would be right now, but I want to entertain that opportunity to sit down with my colleague and have that discussion, I don't think there's any harm with that. I think Wes understands how firmly you're all committed to the, the idea of the river, and on that basis, I, I think we can have a good discussion.
You know, my position, Mr. Mayor, was that regardless of what we decide to do about the intake component, that canal has some assets, not only to the city, but other users along the canal, and quite candidly, I've been really disappointed with our citizens that live along that canal, and the maintenance that Albany should have been doing on their portion, that they have not done, that's affected the property owners that live along there. But nevertheless, the drainage issues, the stormwater, there's, there's issues surrounded with that canal that I think we need answers from, and I think the study is a source to come up with better answers.
And I would agree with that.
I'd like, I'd like to say this, I've been on council for quite a while, interestingly, some of the, what you're saying about our tent to pull out earlier, I wasn't aware of it, so I think there was a lot of maybe staff interaction, that was probably not, shouldn't have been allowed to happen without policy to back it up, and I think we're all paying a little bit of a price for that. I appreciate that you're standing here, that you took the time, you're...
Yes.
Trying to communicate in a civil way, and I appreciate that a lot. My big concern is this thing has taken a little bit of traction, is that two cities that I think go back a long ways, and always seem to get along well together, are maybe putting something in place of the total harmony that we should be happy to see. You know, years ago, I remember, I think Wayne was around when we agreed to enter, our enterprise zone would expand to include Albany, because you're a partner with us in the growth of this area, and to me, that's a bigger picture than a single issue, and I'd like to see the tone change. Whatever the answer is, hey, maybe we just disagree on some particulars, but not the tone of cooperating together for the better of this entire county. So I'd love to see a bigger discussion happen, more education, more information is, is for everybody's betterment.
I really agree with that, and I, I think that's one of the reasons I'm here, it's one of the reasons why we put on the table the idea of, you know, the avoided cost study as an idea in the first place, is to get us back to, you know, a, a discussion where we could find areas of agreement, instead of exploring our differences, which I think is where we've been in the past. And, you know, we have a model, that the City of Albany and the City of Millersburg have been partners for well over a decade now, both with our water treatment and in our wastewater treatment, and that relationship, and I think you may know that, if you've been around this area long enough, that the cities of Albany and Millersburg didn't always get along all that well in the distant past, and it was, I think, over similar kinds of things, it's where you have a collision of interests, you know, where one city is thinking, okay, we see our interests really clearly, and the other says, we see our interests really clearly, and then they would start getting into, you know, well, you said this, and you said that, and then people wouldn't talk to each other for a period of time, but they finally figured out a good mechanism for bringing the two cities together, we have a joint water, wastewater management committee that meets on a quarterly basis with the City of Millersburg, actually, it's irregular, I mean, but we, I think in the last year, we probably just met one time. But that relationship has been very positive, and, you know, we haven't had any, at least in the time I've been here, we've had no problems at all. So, there's a model to how to get there, I think we just need to work it a little harder, and I think there's been some changes on both sides, in both cities, that, you know, we should allow us to be able to come to some kind of resolution.
I think that would be beneficial for both of us, and I hope so too, and I'd love to see both of you work something out.
Thank you.
I think we're going to have to work with the, with the engineering firm to see what kind of a mechanism they would entertain to, to answer those other questions, whether they want... to take an amendment from us and Albany pay us for those costs, or whether they contract directly with Albany to answer some of those other questions that Wes...
That's details that the city manager can take care of.
I'm not sure that I care how that works out.
Yeah, and to that, I'll just say that there's layers of things that Wes and I are going to have to work through before I can get to that question. But we need to start. And so, right now, I don't have that answer, and we'll see where we go from here.
I just want to point out that I hear, I kind of hear three different issues here, and I want to make sure that those three issues are treated separately, because I think it's important that we do that. And the issues that I'm hearing, one obviously is the water intake. That's a completely, the ability for us to get water at this point is a separate issue from the second issue, which is the canal maintenance. And that is completely separate from the third issue, which has been mentioned twice, and that's the storm runoff. Those, I would prefer to see those dealt with almost individually. I know it's going to come together at some point, but I don't want to see storm runoff and canal maintenance get rushed into a proposal to get us intake, because the reality is we're held up right now. We're, we have a, we have a plan on hold, waiting for permission from Albany to get water. And so, that to me is the crucial step. And storm runoff can be its own IGA later, and we can talk about the canal maintenance issues later as well. Am I off-base with that, or?
No, I happen to agree with you, I'm not sure Wes would.
Yeah, I would say that if, storm water is a big issue for us, because...
I understand.
Obviously, anything that happens upstream of us concerns us, and so, yeah, we'd want that question answered. And it would complicate, if going in, the ground rules are that we don't talk about storm water and canal maintenance, then that's going to make for a very difficult discussion.
I would agree, I see the storm drainage as a separate issue from our intake. But I also will tell you that that is an issue that we really legitimately need to talk to Albany about. Whether you view it as married to something else or not, storm drainage does need to be dealt with. And there is some level of overlap with maintenance and the intake issue. There's certainly some differences, I mean, the reason that historically there's been this one-third, two-thirds, is that, from what I've studied, the canal is roughly 24 miles long. And as I understand it, eight miles of that canal go through us. And so historically, it was just kind of like, well, gosh, gee whiz, one-third of the canal is in the city of Lebanon, therefore, we should have one-third of the maintenance costs. Well, that opens up all kinds of questions. That assumes joint ownership of the canal. That's what I would contend. As opposed to, what is the maintenance requirement because we take water out of the canal? So, and those are differences that still need to be sorted out, whether it's one-third, two-thirds, or 3%, 97%. That's a big gulf in between. And the only way we're going to address it, if we can find a solution, is to talk about it. So, I just keep coming back to that, and I would just respectfully ask the council authorize me to go forward and talk with Wes and his team about those issues, understanding, Jason, that there are some separation in those issues, and I get that. And I agree with you.
What's gone on, Chad, for 80 years or so, can probably wait another six months or a year to...
But I agree with you that there's, some of these issues are separate. What we need to do going forward, my discussions with Wes, is figure out how we're going to marry our disparate positions and find some sort of solution if there's one there.
I would propose that we authorize our city manager to continue the negotiations with...
I think we could just do it on an informal basis, and if we can just get a consensus of the council, just because we're just enabling Gary just to talk and encourage him to negotiate with the city of Albany.
Yeah, I understand your direction, and I appreciate it. Thank you. And when it's appropriate to bring something back to you, I certainly will.
And thank you very much for coming, we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for having me here. I appreciate the opportunity to maybe start a dialogue that will move toward that more positive relationship between the cities. Although, in general, I would like to emphasize that I think we have great respect for the city of Lebanon and Albany. Sometimes you may not hear all the nice things that get said. We certainly understand and appreciate all the good economic development work that's been done here. We just had a nice meeting in our city hall that involved, I think, Gary, you were there, where our folks were working with your folks on downtown redevelopment issues. So, you know, I think we have great relationships, at least everything I've heard from the police department, with your fire district, you know, we should celebrate the fact that as a communities, we do in general get along very well. Occasionally, we're going to have points of disagreement, and I think that's where we've been on this one, and hopefully we can get that one fixed too.
Good, and we're doing some good things here, and hopefully that we can incorporate that with both cities. Thank you.
Thanks, Wes.
Okay, next up, still under presentation, Gary will talk about the Lebanon Vision 2020, and we also have Beth from BDS Planning here.
Is this picking up? Yeah, okay. Good evening. A couple, I do want to make a couple of points before I launch into my PowerPoint. First of all, this will be the fifth showing I've done of this PowerPoint. And I know that some of you have seen it once, if not twice, maybe three times. And for that, if you are one of those people, let me issue my apology to you, that you have to suffer through again this presentation. But I do it because I know that there are many in the room who have not seen it, and given the very community outreach nature of this process, I want to make sure that we communicate clearly what this vision process is about. The second point I want to make is, if I could redesign this room at this very minute, so I didn't have my back to these good people, I would certainly do it. Because here again, this presentation is all about the community, and here I'm sitting with my back to them. I would much rather them be able to see me and have eye contact with them to help convey both my enthusiasm and my energy for this project. So with that deficit, we'll go forward. And what I want to do tonight is talk about the who, what, why, and how of community visioning, just the guts of the whole thing. And I'm going to handle each of these separately. And also, once I've done that, I want to talk about the elements of community visioning. What are the parts and pieces, and how does this thing all fit together, and what's the process look like? And just, I'm going to spend a minute or two on what community visioning is not. There can be some confusion with maybe a later step in the process, and I want to cover that. But then, I'll finish by kind of walking us through where we've been so far in this process, and what we expect to get, happen as we move forward. So, I want to start with the who. Who does community visioning involve? And the broadest answer to that is everybody possible. It's a broad cross-section of our community, including but not limited to, of course, the public, that's number one, our cities, citizens committees that have a focus on certain areas of the city service, our business owners and our industry representatives, most certainly, our service clubs, who are all very active and have a lot of passion and care about this place we call home, our nonprofit organizations, passion there again for our community, and then our hospital, of course, and the active role that they've taken in our community. Of course, Comp Northwest, that great addition of the medical university to our community, and how active they are. Our community schools, when I put that up there on the screen, that includes not only our public school, but our private schools in the community, and also certainly the community college. Our youth organizations, one that comes immediately to mind is Boys and Girls Club, of course, but also all of the different sports leagues that deal with our youth and church groups and so forth. Anything that deals with youth, we'd like to make contact with those people. And then, last would be all of us, the city elected officials and the staff. So, when we went out and looked for our consultant to help facilitate this process, one of the major themes was we wanted to reach out and we wanted to, well, make contact with the folks that we normally see and interact with, we wanted to reach those elements of the community that are not normally reached. Because at the end, we want a vision for this community that represents the whole of the community, and it's a good cross-section of it. So now, we'll talk about the what. What is this, what is this thing we're calling community visioning? Well, in its simplest terms, it's a process where we go about to determine what it is that the community aspires to become in the future. And in that process, we need to identify those issues that need to be addressed current day. How are we going to address those, and what steps do we need to take over a period of time, so that when we reach the end of what we see as this current vision cycle, that we resemble that thing or that idea we had about ourselves way back when we started? Of course, as I've just covered, it involves a broad range of stakeholders throughout the community. It's an organized way of identifying our values and our issues. And once we know our values, that's the thing that defines who we are now, and we can deal with our issues, then we can move forward to become something that we want to look like in the future. We have a choice here. We can just let the future happen to us, which sadly, a lot of communities do that. They project their budgets a year or two out, and every year, they plan the budget for what they think is going to happen in the next year, and never take that broad-range look down the road. You know, this is what we look like today, what do we need to look like 10, 15, 20 years from now? And if that's what we aspire to be, what steps do we need to take to get there? It also is your creative, out-of-the-box brainstorming opportunity for the community to talk about its future, talk about what we want to be like in coming years. And then at the end, what we have is this vision statement, a formal statement, that describes the shared direction that we've developed together. And underlying that broad statement, we would expect there's going to be maybe a half-a-dozen to 10 focus areas. We'll take that vision and we'll look at, what areas do we need to focus on to move the community forward towards that common vision? And it may be any number of things. It may be, there may be a focus area on youth, there may be a focus area on our local businesses, there may be a focal focus area on infrastructure of some type for the city. Every city's vision statement looks different because it's unique to us. So the why, why are we going to do this, and there's several good reasons. First, my experience in going through this with my prior city is that the commitment and the sense of energy that you get from people when they're able to talk about the future of the community they love, and what they'd like to see happen to that community, and how we want to deal with the issues that we have in front of us. So it's just that engagement process that I think helps us all feel like we're together in this thing, and it builds commitment. And that's a good thing for any community. It also affirms that the individual is important to the greater whole, because through this process, we're going out and we're asking individuals, what do you think about your community and the future? And it's those individual responses all put together as the whole that builds that vision. But it can't happen unless there's the individual. So I'm always very excited about the fact that we affirm that each of us are a part of the greater whole. It establishes a standard of excellence, and how does it do that? Well, we're going to put together this vision that's going to dictate to us, as a city organization at least, certain places, we need to put our human capital and our financial resources, you know, able to move us forward in those ways. There are going to be some goals that have to be attained, and that's going to call on our better parts of our professionalism to be able to find the ingenuity and the resources to make those things happen. So it's going to set a standard of excellence for our organization internally, and as I describe more, I think it's going to have the same effect for some of our nonprofit groups and other groups in the community. It proactively bridges our present to our future. The future isn't just going to happen to us, we're going to have a plan in place. And I should, I should mention here too, that when we talk about Lebanon 2040, and we set a vision today of what we think we want to look like in 2040, I can guarantee you one thing, that whatever that vision is that we set today, or in this next year or so, we work on this, that is not what we'll look like in 2040. It's an idea of how we want to move forward, and there'll be adjustments along the way. There'll be times when we take a timeout and we'll make adjustments as we're more educated and better informed about how we're moving forward. So I just want to be realistic about that, but it's still a plan for moving us forward into a general direction that we, as a community, desire to go. I've mentioned this before, it reflects the uniqueness of the community. If that weren't true, then we could, you know, the city of Dallas just did one of these, we could go over to Dallas and say, Dallas, give us your vision, but I know the manager told me about his vision, and I guarantee you, it has nothing to do with us. So this is something that's unique to us, and it will reflect that. And it inspires and creates enthusiasm for the community, and that's something that, as a city manager and one who's committed my life to community, the concept of community that I get very excited about. So it's going to be good to see that happening. And then, at the bottom of the heap, but very important, is it's going to help us as city leaders know how to budget our resources, and not only that, but how to deploy the human resources that we have to move the community forward. When we look at future budgets, not this next year, because we won't have the vision put together, but budgets after that, they're going to be predicated on this vision and where we need to be putting our resources to help us get to where we want to be. So I wanted to throw some quotes in here from some familiar organizations and individuals. This one from Major League Baseball, "If you don't know where you are going, you might end up somewhere else." "Dreams are extremely important, you can't do it unless you can imagine it," George Lucas. "In the long run, men hit only what they aim at," Thoreau. Then from Proverbs, "Where there is no vision, the people perish." So, let's talk about how. How do we realize our preferred future? There's two parts to this. First, we make a plan, and that's the vision. And I want to be very clear about that, that there's two parts to this. And the second part is we make a map, and that's otherwise known as a strategic plan. So when we get to the end of this vision process, early next summer, the next words out of my mouth to the council will be, okay, folks, now it's time to start our strategic plan. When I talked to the manager over in Dallas, I asked him, if you had to do this over again, what would you do differently? He said, make sure people understand that there's two parts to this process. Seems they got to the end of their process, and it wasn't universally understood, they still had to do some planning. You can't just have a vision and then with no map or plan how you're going to get there. So that is yet to come. So there's two parts, a plan and a map. So the elements, so the, how does this all work? And I'm going to put it in these little phrases, the who we are, the what we think, what we want to become, and the areas we need to focus on to realize our vision. So, put in context, the who we are, that's just the assessment of our environmental and our demographic factors that make us who we are today. That informs us about a lot of issues that help us realistically look at what we can do in the future. So we need to understand, before we move forward, who are we? And what does that say about where we should go in the future? What are our strengths and what are our weaknesses? Then there's the what we think, and that's this overarching public outreach that we're talking about, just the going out and reaching as many elements of the community as we can. And that's going to be enabled by our consulting facilitators, who Beth is here to inform you about their involvement here in the community here in just a moment. But the what we think, which is pretty much the guts of what we're going to be doing over the next several months. And then there's the what we want to become, and that's what the next several months is all about, and it's developing that vision statement that I've already talked extensively about, and then I've already talked about this too, and that's, we're going to, although we're not going to plan it all out, we are going to end this process, this vision process, with six to 10 focus areas that tell us where we need to start our planning and how to move forward from there. forward from there. So just a word on what community visioning is not, and in a way, this is kind of redundant, but the first one, this first element isn't. It's not a document limited to the city organization. And what I mean by that is that some of those focus areas, those six to 10 focus areas, you know, most of them probably will bear on this city organization. But there may be a couple that bear on a nonprofit or a group of nonprofits or some other organization in the city. And they'll be asked to maybe do some strategic planning of their own to move that area forward. So I want everyone to understand that this is not an internal document for the city. And when I say city, I mean organization. This is a document that should and probably will apply broadly to the entire community. And it is not the strategic plan that there's goal work that we need to do when this is all done. And I think you get that point, and I won't belabor it anymore. So let's talk about the process that we've begun now and launching actually publicly tonight. And the things we've already done are those things that I've put the checkmark next to in the box. And the council's aware that we developed a request for proposals for professional facilitation of our visioning process. That RFP was brought to you, you approved it, we issued it to the community of professionals that provide these services. The mayor appointed a vision project steering committee. And just a word on these folks, these people aren't doing the vision. What they do is, one, they're the group that looked at the RFPs and made a recommendation to the council of who we should hire as our facilitators for this process. And going forward, it's this group that's going to be meeting with those professional facilitators just to keep track of where the process is. But the vision is actually coming from the community. I've seen a couple of emails since we've got started on this, and there appears to be maybe some confusion that people think that this committee is the one that's going to be setting the vision, and nothing can be further from the truth. So I want to emphasize that, that this is just an oversight committee that's kind of keeping in touch with our facilitators to make sure that everything's going in the direction that we hoped for. And on that committee, the mayor made some excellent appointments, particularly from our private sector, Adam Kirkpatrick, local dentist, just a great fellow who has a lot of passion for our community. I'm sure a lot of people know Michelle Steinhebel, who was formerly with the Lebanon Express and now at Comp Northwest. Rob Hess, of course, our school superintendent. Several years back, Rob led the school district through a visioning process, so it's great to have his experienced perspective on what we're doing. And then, of course, Shelley Garrett, our chamber director extraordinaire, big promoter of our community. And I'm just really pleased to have her on that group. And then, the also around folks here, Bob, Paul, and I, representing the organization So the committee has since evaluated those proposals that we received. We received seven proposals from seven different facilitating professional groups. We identified one of those groups that we felt was, through a fairly rigorous process, we identified one of those seven that we felt was best suited for this work. Contract was negotiated with them, and the recommendation was made to me as the city manager. I basically passed that along to the city council. The council did approve that agreement, and the contract was awarded to BDS Planning and Urban Design. I'm particularly excited about having this group onboard with us. Brian, was Brian's last name?
Scott.
Yeah, Brian Scott, who's the principal of BDS, has many, many years prior to his work with BDS as the executive director of the Oregon Downtown Association. So he has a lot of experience with small-town Oregon, and so he gets it. And so I'm really pleased to have him and his team. His team also is built specifically for reaching traditionally unreached groups, which is exactly what we had set out to find. So I'm very pleased to have this team, and Beth Dufek is here tonight as part of that team, and I'm going to be very pleased to hear her presentation here in just a moment. So what next? The consultant team begins implementing the Lebanon 2040 project, and that begins here tonight with Beth's presentation. The committee that I spoke of before is going to oversee and provide input to the consulting team throughout the project. That takes us from now until probably June of next year. At that point, the consultant team presents the project outcomes to the city council. That will include the findings, the value statement, and the vision statement, as I described before. That's very likely the July 2015 council meeting. I'm presuming, given the level of public input and support, that the council will adopt that vision at that same meeting, July of 2015. And then, at that point, August and going forward, that's when we'll begin engaging in that strategic process of developing our specific goals and work plans for how we move forward based on the community vision. So that's it.
Well done.
If there are any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those. If not, I'm going to hand it over to Beth.
Thank you for inviting us here tonight, me being the representative of US, which is BDS Planning and Urban Design, and we also have a partner firm that we work with who specifically targets those difficult-to-reach people in this process, Andres Mantilla from CBE Strategic. So here I am. Here we are, the community-wide visioning process for Lebanon. I'm going to go through real quickly and introduce US, BDS, and then also talk about visioning a little bit and what we've done in terms of visioning in other communities, and then the process specifically here. And then, I'm really hoping by the end of this, and this shouldn't take that long, to do a really lightning round of your vision for your preliminary vision thoughts for Lebanon, so kind of going through what we did with the steering committee and the staff last week. So with that, the introduction. So we were here last week, and here's kind of what we learned in our day here, we were here last week, Tuesday, is that Lebanon has a logging history. We learned a lot about the economy of Lebanon based on the logging. You have very beautiful historic and natural features. You're a very elegant community, I think. Small-town atmosphere, that was, we asked people in the steering committee and the staff what they loved about Lebanon, and everybody agreed, like underlined it three times, that it's a small-town, the small-town atmosphere. A very connected community. There's also some cohesion within the community, and they really feel like you take care of each other. Now, open space parks, paths and trails. Gary did take us on a tour, and we did see Cheeto Lake. I will say, until I Googled it, I thought it was Cheeto Lake. Thought you guys were very clever in naming, so I was waiting for Chester Cheeto to come up. And that you're growing, and we are really, really, really impressed with the amount of investment that's being made in Lebanon with the university and Samaritan Hospital. And also, you're just really, really friendly and have a great friendly Main Street character. So Main Street is just a lovely asset to this community. Who we are, BDS Planning and Urban Design. What we're currently working on, which is actually where Andres and Brian are, are the citywide strategic plan for the city of Tacoma. That also is a community where we really had to do some clever outreach tactics to get to the entire community. We also are just kicking off the Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Futures Task Force. It's a very, very sophisticated way to say the Puget Sound region needs to figure out how to pay for transit, because if you've driven through Seattle lately, you will understand the roads are all full up. We also work closely with the city of Seattle, which we really appreciate, really, how to say, casual relationships and friendly relationships with cities and councils. And the Only in Seattle Initiative, which focuses on neighborhood business districts, so we actually have a pretty expertise niche in that. And then, Business Improvement Area Assistance Program, also with the city of Seattle. That's Brian down there, who couldn't be here tonight in the lower-left-hand corner, facilitating a meeting. And visioning, again, the citywide strategic plan for the city of Tacoma, which is just wrapping up. Brian also worked on on his own the city of Burian, community-wide vision and economic development strategy for the city of Burian up in Washington, and really feels like this process is, him having worked on that is really going to help fine-tune this process, and hopefully, we'll be really good partners with you as we were with Burian. And then, 25-year vision for Central Portland is what Brian worked on when he was just starting out on his own a while ago. So that's his very familiar experience in Oregon, is definitely with the city. So like Gary said, I mean, we wholeheartedly agree with Gary that, you know, a vision comes out with your core values. We agree to and focus on some milestones, which are identifying your issues, vetting the options with the community, and then looking at future scenarios, and then we all come up with vision statements together. And then, our process, if this is probably in your books, it might be easier to read in front of you, this is our graphic version of our schedule and what we have proposed, how we manage this process. So we are here today in that second column, that's US, sitting at the table at the top, that's the community, I mean, that's the council meeting. Like I said, we were here last week, and we had a staff meeting with all the department managers, and some of you were there. And then, we also met with the steering committee. And then, Gary took us on a tour, and in addition to that, we actually did some last-minute, rapid-style, one-on-one stakeholder interviews, just to talk to some people who are key to the community. So we met with Frank. We also met with Paul from the medical college. We end up, I mean, it was amazing. You guys are so organized. We, at 3:00, started setting these meetings, and everybody fell into beautiful half-hour slots between 3:00 and 6:00, when we had a glass of whiskey with Jim McDaniel on our way out of town. We also met, so Marty. And then, tonight, right before I came here, I actually met with Chris Latimer over at the Boys and Girls Club and just got a wealth of information. So these, this is our style. We really want to get to know you and understand, in very casual conversations, your issues, and maybe not bog everybody down with the process, but really find a way to have a conversation. So, that being said, we'll, so our stakeholder interviews are not completely done. Our other goal in talking to people is to find out who else we should talk to, and then start to design some community outreach meetings you'll see in January. This idea of targeted outreach is, we want to hear from stakeholders in the community who we should really target our outreach to, to get to have very precise conversations about the issues. And then, further down the road, once we've had an idea, once we've had a time to analyze and vet these issues, then to have a community meeting. So if you fast-forward a little bit, then there'll be community meetings more in the spring. Before that, we'll have another steering committee meeting to talk about what we learned in our targeted outreach backing up to January. Two people will be here for two full days, and I've already talked to, Shelley has very graciously offered up the chamber offices and her staff to help us organize some form of, you know, targeted outreach. And then, Chris also said, we should really start to think about when parents are picking up kids at the Boys and Girls Club, and that's the kind of meetings we want to have. Not, come, we'll feed you, and we're going to scare you as consultants and ask you for ideas. We really want to meet people where they are and where they're comfortable talking. Then, the idea from the steering committee would be to help us shape some affinity groups. So just to give you an idea, and if you're familiar with this, you'll know, you know, the hotspots in the community, which generally have been evolving around education, safety, health. I'm going to guess natural resources, based on the conversation I just heard, are possibly going to come up. So then, those, the steering committee will approve, and then we'll ask to form focus groups and affinity groups around those issues. We'll come back to the council in March or April, and also, the steering committee have some more targeted outreach, once we have some affinity groups defined, and then we can really target our outreach. And then, like I said, in April or May, we'll come here for two days and have some community meetings, where then, we kind of launch this process or help really inform the community on this, on what we've learned, and then get further refine their input. Also, we'll come back for two more city council meetings, and like Gary said, hopefully have a vision ready for your adoption in either June or July. So if there aren't any questions on this, which I'd happily answer, I also, this is, oops, this is the part where I want to do this rapid style. Gary's pulling up to the mic. Yeah?
What's that?
Oh, I thought you were pulling up to the mic like you had a question. So those are the three questions we asked the steering committee and the staff, is what do you truly value about living in Lebanon? Describe Lebanon in a single word, and what is your biggest fear for Lebanon? So what I'm going to do is, if you will answer these questions, and maybe if we can just take a couple of minutes, I can't do it. More technology issues. I was hoping I could type them up there, but as soon as I take it out of presentation mode, you're going to have to trust that I'm writing down your answers back here. So I can go around the room, you can shout them out. I have to grab a pen, though, so wait.
Would you like to start?
Yeah, you want to ask the question?
I want to ask you, what do you value about living in Lebanon?
Well, obviously, my strongest value is the fact that it's a small community with citizenry of a lot of diversity, and that we have came from a timber community to a community that has begun to diversify in a totally different arena. And that economic development is, I think, the basis for the excitement that we have as citizens within the community. I think one of the strong points of our community is that we are survivors. We are eager to look at opportunity. And this visioning process is a tool I treasure in terms of how we move forward and collect those visions from the citizens and put a plan in place.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I think what I really value is this, is the sense of community and the opportunity here for the individuals. In this town, you can do as much or as little as you want and to be involved in this community. And I think a lot of us sitting up here are examples of that. You know, if you want to get involved, there's opportunity to do that. If you want to coach a team, there's opportunity to do that. If you want to volunteer your time, there are tons of opportunities to do that. And so, there's no shortage of opportunity for people, and I think it's no secret that there are a lot of highly motivated do-gooders in this community. And they're not just active in one aspect of it or in one niche of the community, they're active across the board. And so, you have already met a lot of them, I'm sure, and you're going to meet a lot more of them. And so, to me, that's, it's a great place to be for those reasons.
Great, thank you. Paul, you want to sum up what you said?
Yeah, I already said it in our previous meeting, but I'll repeat it then. It actually echoes both what you said, is the sense of community and the caring and the way people kind of support each other in our community. I think that's one of the neatest things about living in our town. Bob?
Well, I'm kind of prejudiced because I was born and raised here. I left, my job took me away for 28 years, and it brought me back, and I wanted to retire here in Lebanon, which I have done. It's a great city. Wayne pretty much hit it right on the head, we're survivors. The timber industry was the biggest thing that we had going. You couldn't hardly cross the street at times with the logging trucks coming through and sawmills everywhere. Then we went downhill, and we were known as the bedroom community, because everybody left Lebanon and were working outside of Lebanon. But then, in about 2008, things started turning around, and we started having industries come into Lebanon, and everything started growing, and everything, everybody started smiling again, I believe. And that's what's important to me.
Great, thank you. Rob?
I can sum it up quickly by just saying it's a small but vibrant community.
Excellent. Floyd?
Well, I think small-town feel. I do like the sense of community, but there's also some, a real vein of independence that they don't seem to threaten. Those two characteristics don't seem to threaten each other. I like the sort of sense of nature that surrounds us, probably more. I didn't come prepared to answer these questions.
We can keep talking. All right, one word, starting with Wayne. One word to describe Lebanon. You can have some.
On Wayne, one word.
Excellent. Jason?
Home.
Home?
Community.
Yeah, I did of that, growing.
Growing.
I think home says it really.
Great, thank you. So you all feel great. What are the fears?
Fears?
What are your What are your biggest fears for Lebanon, moving into the future, moving into 2040?
I guess if I had a fear, it would be that we, as a city, are not going to have the focus areas and the budget to make those focus areas successful.
Great.
I, I think I'm afraid that potentially, there won't be enough here to keep my kids here, when they are ready to, when they're out of college, or they're out of high school. And I want to make sure that there's, there's something here for young, young professionals and young families that will keep them here, and not just have them pulling up roots and heading somewhere else that does offer that. And I think this process is actually exactly what is going to help abate that fear, so.
Yeah, I hope so.
My biggest fear is jobs and the economy in our community. Making sure that, that the families that do come here, or just like you were talking about, your kids, have places to work. And some of the things we can't control, but it's just my biggest fear, is that we have people that are out of work.
I have no fears.
Excellent.
We're going to continue to move forward.
Yes, you.
My, my concern is that we don't seize the possibilities.
My fear is that our blessing will be the curse, in the sense that communities got to grow, or they go backwards. And when I graduated from high school, there was a big, big town over there called Albany. It was a population at the time of about 15,000 people. And I think about that. So if, fast-forward, I've been out of school at least five years, that someone graduating today will, in 40 years, that we would be the size of Albany. It's kind of scary. Because I just can't imagine we'll be the same place.
Too much, too much growth. Okay, that was it. That was pretty easy. Any questions about the process, or?
So Beth, what's, what's, what should the community expect next, and when will that happen?
So the community should be expecting next for us to return for a couple of days in January. And before then, I will have communicated with all the stakeholders I've talked to about kind of following up with names they've given me, for making sure we reach out to people and schedule appointments, events, something for those two days. And then, in the meantime, we'll be building a website. We should probably expect to have a Lebanon 2040 website up, and hopefully connect it to your Facebook page, and really start to get the word out, since this is now the public announcement. We really do want the community to know that this is happening, and get them excited and want to contribute. I will say, having met with Chris right before this, I'm really hearing there are people who just do not want to be engaged, and we take it upon ourselves to figure out how to change that. So, that'll be the next thing. And then we'll have, and then we'll, sometime in the late winter, early spring, we'll be sending out a survey, either via email. We had also talked about at our department staff meeting, or department head meeting, possibly going out in the utility bill, printed copies, and then also having something people can pick up at the city. What can I say about the stakeholders I met with? Paul said he'd be happy to have a student group be a focus group, and he would facilitate that. And Samaritan would consider putting our survey in their newsletter, in their employee newsletter, or posting it somewhere. You know, they, they were very honest, that they, everybody would ask them for that all the time. So we have to be very, they have to be very critical of who they allow access to their employees. So those are some of the things we're working on. It, it sounds like it's a lot of directions to be heading, but really, we're heading in the direction of the vision for Lebanon, and these are just the ways in which we get there.
Thank you, Beth. I just wanted to make a comment. I had a citizen come to the office today and talk to me, and asking about this vision process that he's been hearing about. And he was concerned that, that it wasn't going to reach out, it wasn't going to be public, he wasn't going to be able to be involved. And one of the things I know Robert, myself, Gary, we've all talked about, and I think we've even talked about it on council, and I know Beth is aware of, of our feelings, is we want to make sure that everyone that is, even people who aren't interested, have an opportunity to, to say their say and talk about things. And the extent, and the reason that we picked BDS on the committee, is because of their outreach. And you have the one gentleman, Marcel?
Andres Mantilla.
Andres?
Andres Mantilla, yeah.
And he's a specialist in going out, and I know you are too, of finding these people that would normally never have a voice in the community, and that's what we want to do. And so I was able to, to talk to this gentleman. He's a retired public works director from California, and he lives here in town. And he wanted to just express it. He thought it was great, however, he wanted to make sure that everybody was going to be able to have a voice. And I feel very confident that that's what you're going to do, and that's the whole point of this whole process. Because for us, just to pick two, three groups of people, and just ask them questions, they're the ones that are always around town, always doing everything, we want to know from everybody. We really want it to be a full community vision, and I just want to make that clear tonight.
Definitely. Along that line, since we have a tremendous amount of commute to those who live here but don't shop here, don't work here, how do you get, how do you reach them for an opinion? Because they are disengaged in the community, really.
Right. But they could be enticed to live here if the vision matched theirs. That's, without committing to something you can't do, I have ideas that we would definitely want to vet with either the steering committee or Gary, about how, learning where people come from to go, and intercepting them there, is either with surveys, or a conversation, or something. And then the Boys and Girls Club is also an example of where people come. She has access to more people outside of Lebanon, so. That's a good question, though, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. You have a safe trip home.
Thank you. I'm, I'm only going to Portland, you don't have to feel as bad this time.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we'll have public comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on items discussed at the earlier work session, or any other city business. The council welcomes all respectful comments regarding the city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, and stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request.
Jason, I'm a politician, I lied to you.
I thought we had an agreement, Bill.
I said I'm a politician. Discussing this with the water situation with Albany, in my understanding, the council's not too tickled about it. But does the city of Lebanon have a grandfather clause that they can get water out of the river without consulting Albany and do their own thing?
Not more than the current intake that we have now.
There's nothing back when?
We've looked.
Well, I'll give you an eep for that, Jason.
I can address it. There's nothing in the agreements we've had with the city of Albany that prevents us from going to the river. The agreements we've had with Albany have secured a right to take our water right out of the canal. Whether we exercise that or not, that's up to us.
I was just curious whether the city of Lebanon had something prior before, because I'm a new kid in the town. I was raised in Crawfordsville, and I was like Jason was saying earlier, trying to keep the kids home, you get hungry, you got a family, you got to support them, you got to leave, do your thing, whatever. But I was just curious if there wasn't something back when, 50, 60, 100 years ago, that the city of Lebanon had grandfather clause that they could get their water from. And this deal with Albany is kind of a new deal. My understanding, didn't PPP and L own that at one time?
Until 86.
Yes, yeah, 86.
Something like that.
So this is just a relatively new deal with Albany?
Our current agreement was enacted in 1986. I can tell you, Bill, the only pre-existing anything that still stands would be a prescriptive easement that we have to put our storm drainage into the canal. We have a right to do that. Now, we have a right to do that, but we also have a responsibility to address any impacts we may have on the canal for putting our storm drainage into it. So, city of Albany can't tell us not to put our storm drainage into the canal, but they can ask us to help out. So that's, and that dates way back, because we've been, we've been putting storm drainage into the canal since early 1900s.
Well, I was just curious.
Thank you, Bill.
Fix my politician, Jason.
You're doing good.
Anyone else would like to speak? Address council? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the regular session. Number one, Republic Services. Julie Jackson, is she here? Oh, there she is.
I'm Julie Jackson with Republic Services, and I'll sign in as soon as Kevin's done.
And Kevin Hines with Republic Services. Welcome.
Thank you. We aren't really here with a presentation tonight. If you remember, we were here in March with our annual report, and made a presentation at that time. So we're really just here tonight to be available to answer any questions you may have about the refuse rate adjustment that takes effect January 1st. You know, we don't really have much else, unless there's something you'd like, we'd love to talk to you about, anything you'd like to talk about, or we'd like to answer questions.
Someone asked me about the composting that we had talked about last year.
Right.
And where are we with that?
Well, I think we came back with a ballpark rate. We also, at the request of council, did some polling. We didn't, it was pretty unscientific, but I think it was pretty representative. We were at the Lebanon Business on Display, and we just had a big chart, and we asked people, "What do you think about this idea?" We talked to a lot of people who were pretty engaged, I think, in Lebanon, who were at the chamber event. And now I'm going to have to think back, you're taxing my memory, but I think we talked to close to 70 people, and I think that by about a two-to-one margin, people were in favor of the idea of yard debris on a weekly basis. So, for what it's worth, that's where we are. We brought you some rates, and then I think it's just kind of been left. So we'd certainly be happy to take that conversation back up if you're interested. We think it's a great idea.
Yeah, so I think that conversation, it started when we had presented the annual report, and we floated that idea out to some of our jurisdictions about going from a bi-weekly, or every other week, yard debris collection pickup to a weekly. So that is certainly something that is out on the table. You know, we're ready to go at any given time. We just want to make sure that, you know, council and our customers is, you know, that's something that, that they want us to do. You know, I think the best time to present this is probably already past this, at least for this year. Maybe we bring it up right after the first of the year in the spring, when, you know, grass starts growing again, and folks are wanting to use their yard debris carts on a weekly basis. But yeah, I mean, we're certainly willing to provide that service at, you know, at any time.
I think that would probably be good. You want to bring that back in spring, and we'll talk about that again?
Sure.
Because I, I know there was a big interest, I know Councilor Griswold was interested, and I think there was some interest here, so.
So I would recommend maybe having the discussion in February, and then that way, you know, we can implement that, start implementing the program in March, April, if, if that sounds good.
I don't know if we had a discussion at the time, but I've had citizens ask me if it could be seasonal. I don't know, this time of year, you know, the demand is greater than other parts of the year. And people aren't mowing their lawns in the summertime, so the demand is not as great as it is fall, winter.
Right, right. You know, and that, and we've had that question asked, it's very difficult to do something, a program like that, seasonal, because of number of trucks and number of routes that we, because we have to provide service for every customer. And what we have seen over the last 10 to 15 years is our, our yard debris season started out at, you know, six or seven months long. It's actually expanding to about 10 months long. When you start in the spring, you run it through the summer, then into the fall and the leaf season. So really, there are only about a couple months out of the entire year that our yard debris program, or our tons, drop off. Yeah.
It could.
And the other piece I always like to throw out there is that, you know, safety is such an important focus for our company, and so, we can't just find temporary drivers during those months. It's just not possible. We put so much into training all of our drivers, and making sure that they do focus on safety, and are out there safely in Lebanon and all the other communities. And so, for us, having drivers, you know, who have a full-time job is really important, and who are safe in the community. And so those kinds of things make it hard for us to do seasonal things like that.
Are there other communities that are on a weekly basis?
Yes.
Yep.
City of Corvallis, Valometh is, we just had a discussion with Albany last week about that, very thing.
I think in the spring, Mr. Mayor, would be a time to...
Good, okay. Why don't you do that, and we'll have you back?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
You can do that.
Any other questions on the, on the rate increase? I know we've talked about this already, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thanks so much.
Here's some resolution. Let me find it here. You're too far. Select the second page in. There you go. There it is, okay. Okay, well, have the city attorney read the resolution?
Resolution number 2014-36, repealing resolution number 2013-37, and approving Republic Services, formerly Allied Waste Services, rate increases.
Move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 2014-36. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Resolution 2014-36 passes. Number two, proposed chicken permitting process. Walt Windelowski.
Every time I mention chickens to my wife, I always get her, "Bark, bark, bark." So, okay. We got that out of the way. First of all, before I get started, I'd like to offer my humble apologies for my error, totally responsible for that, in terms of getting the right staff memo in the, in the packet. I actually had this memo done about a month and a half ago, and when it came down to put it all together with the ordinance, I sent the wrong one to Linda. So I only discovered it today, much to my chagrin. I will take the wet, proverbial wet noodle on that one. And Linda, you have passed out, they have copies. Okay. What I'd like to do tonight, first of all, before I get too much further, the actual ordinance has not changed. Everything that is in there is what my memorandum really covers here. I'd like to review the material in really two parts. The city council looked at the issue of chickens, our review process, and whether or not we should sort of loosen things up a little bit. And we had a couple of discussions on that. And the last time we met, staff was directed to look at what other cities do, sort of do a little analysis on that, and then come back with sort of a final version, if you will. And so, I'm going to have my report in really two parts. One, I'm going to look at the, I think, the issues that were addressed by the council and the citizens, sort of give you a summary of what I found other ordinances were doing, or other communities were doing. And then I'm going to review what I'm proposing this evening. So there were, as I said, a number of issues, and probably the number one was the number of chickens. And this ranged, looking at a variety of communities, I think I looked at about 10 different communities, relatively around our size, even larger and even smaller, but just kind of a cross-section. The requirements ranged anywhere from two to six chickens, was kind of about right, and there were some communities that placed absolutely no limits, which kind of would make it interesting in an urban environment. One community did have some... One community did have some idea the number of chickens should be in some relationship to the available area, so there was a little bit of that thinking. Generally, most of the ordinances really didn't care where the chickens were located. Only one specifically stated, you cannot have the chicken enclosure or the pen, whatever, between the house and the front property line. In other words, it's not put in the front yard. Use of an enclosure was not really required. There were provisions to allow it, but it wasn't necessary. What was really necessary in most cases was just to be sure you had some fenced-in area, so you didn't need a separate chicken coop, as long as the animals were contained. That was really the big issue. In most cases, noise, odors, matters of cleanliness were taken care of through existing nuisance ordinances. I think that's historically what we've done here in Lebanon as well. Universally, no roosters, end of story. There was, there was absolutely no doubt about that. It was interesting that most every ordinance that looked at residential uses specifically mentioned single-family homes or duplexes. I'll get into that a little bit more, but there were no provisions to allow chickens as an accessory use for an apartment complex. So, that raises some very interesting issues. Some ordinances also prohibited the raising of chickens for commercial sales or to butcher the animals on-site. I can't imagine us actually going that far for enforcement. In other words, where are you cutting off your chicken head for, you know, the Sunday stew? I just think that's probably a little bit too far afield. So, one I'm proposing, again, it is in the adoption ordinance. There are just, this amends parts A and B in 1616 and of 010. And the first part, under A, there's four basic parts. The first item says, "General chickens shall only be kept upon property containing an occupied, detached, single-family dwelling or duplex." These are accessory uses, just like putting up a garden shed, putting up a greenhouse or whatever. And as accessory use, they have to be accessory to something which is an occupied dwelling. Wanted to make sure we made it clear that people cannot get a vacant lot in a subdivision and fence it off and put chickens on there. That's not the intent. I also limited suggesting, certainly, that we limit it to single-family dwellings or duplexes. I cannot imagine 100-unit apartment complex, each with their own chicken coop. I think that would be a little bit interesting in terms of enforcement, odor, noises, et cetera. The maximum number, this is kind of interesting. Currently, right now, no matter how many chickens you have, you have to go through the process. We originally, I think, were discussing three. There was also a discussion, we don't care, maybe four, maybe five. I simply looked at it in terms of, the larger the parcel, I think there's a reasonable expectation, it has greater carrying capacity. So, you can have up to six chickens, again, no roosters, but you can have up to, I guess I should say hens, you can have up to six hens, but the ratio is one hen per 2,000 square feet of area. Now, I didn't look in terms of how much area in the backyard, I just looked at the parcel size itself, because we have accessory records, it's real easy for us to check that out. So, that's not a very difficult thing for us to do. And I was looking also at ease of enforcement as well. The other, the other change is looking at containment. I noted that the hens or chickens shall either be in an enclosure or fenced area. Chicken enclosures shall not be located in any area between the dwelling and front property line. I know there was an interesting point of discussion, but I think it was a general feeling that as an accessory use, you put your tool shed in the back, put the greenhouse in the back, that the chickens should be in the back. However, I do want to say that under the current situation, if this is adopted this evening, what you will find is that that one individual that has the enclosure up front, that would be considered just a grandfathered use. And so, over time, that would probably change. But in the future, as we, as we go forward. Enclosures, the final change, enclosures. An enclosure shall not be located closer than 20 feet to neighboring dwelling and shall be kept clean, dry, free of noticeable odors, and in good repair. My main concern is that when you have a chicken coop, you are really confining the animals. And if you wish to have the coop right next to your bedroom window, that's fine, but I don't think you should impede upon the neighbors. So, I'm looking at a 20-foot separation between the chicken coop enclosure and an adjacent dwelling, not necessarily the dwelling of the residents, but in adjacent dwelling. And again, we have nuisance provisions already on board. Finally, the other change was to item B, the keeping of chickens in excess of the requirements in A above, which includes having more than, that would be allowed, more than six chickens, whatever, as well as animals, bees, or other fowl shall be allowed, provided there's no objection by a person residing within 100 feet of the premises where the animals, bees, or fowl are to be kept. And this simply goes back to the fact that if you have an 8,000-square-foot lot, and you want to put six or seven chickens on there, we have a process for you to go through. Otherwise, these rules are pretty, I think, straightforward. With that, I will note again that the ordinance includes all these provisions, and it's available for adoption. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the city council may have.
Did you explain your comment a moment ago about grandfathering in the, the one scenario that resulted in this complaint or brought this to the council?
The issue is, the council has basically given a pass to people who already have chickens and have not gone through the process. And I am thinking, from an enforcement standpoint, that enclosure is already pre-existing. These new rules would come into effect, what is it, 30 days from now? And at that juncture, these are the rules going forward. What existed prior to this is simply grandfathered. We do something similar in terms of land use as well.
I'm, I'm not certain that that was the intent of the council, that that would be grandfathered, that I thought the process was that we were going to investigate and then determine what was going to be allowed, and at that point in time, everyone would have to then comply with that. So, that's just a question on my part. Maybe I don't remember that accurately.
That was kind of my impression, too, actually. Is that something we can or cannot do with land use? Is that, that is something we could do?
Well, I'm not sure we could do, not sure we could do with land use, but I think in this context, we can do it because we're not, we're not changing a right. They didn't really have the right to do it in the first place.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. I didn't mean to throw on land use.
That's the premise that I was...
Then, at that juncture, I don't think the language would have to be changed. I think it's just a matter of how we proceed with enforcement.
Okay.
That's all.
I think the numbers, I think the numbers in the requirements, I think it all looks good, and I think it gives people a little more leeway, but it also has the rules in there.
And then, I think, I, just so that we don't end up with any concern, I think we made a commitment to the individual that brought this up, that we would get back with them. So, I'm not sure what the timeframe would be to allow them to come in compliance, whatever that's, is that a 30-day or 60-day or whatever process? But I think they ought to be given a notice when they needed to comply with that.
Normally, it's 30, however, Kevin has some, well, the city has some discretion on that, and that's usually an enforcement issue. If it's a real grievous problem, then obviously sooner rather than later. But normally, it's about 30 days.
Yeah. Just for clarification, B, where it says the keeping of chickens in excess, blah, 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 no objection by a person residing with 100 feet, does that mean they petitioned prior, or they can do this until there is an objection with 100 feet?
This, this basically follows our current format. You have a petition that goes out there prior to getting the animals on the property. And currently, the language is 300 feet. And I think, as was mentioned before, I could approve a multimillion-dollar expansion at NTEC, not notify anyone, but yet, if you want to get a chicken on your property, you need a no cave within 300 feet. You know, everyone within 300 feet.
Well, I think the big difference, though, is that we're going to allow outright a certain number of chickens based on square footage. This petition any longer will only be used if someone wants a greater density of hens per square foot, than the ordinance will allow.
Correct. And also, if they want to, sheep, goats, horses, bees.
Right. All the other animals, too.
Yes.
So, I don't see in here something that prevents someone from petitioning for more than six hens?
Well, they can, because it says, "The keeping of chickens in excess of the requirements in A above." So, if you're only allowed to have four hens, and you want to keep six, what you're asking will be in excess of what is allowed under item A. And so, that's when you come in.
I maybe misunderstood it, but if I've got four, and I want to have eight, and I go to petition, so I can have more than the six that are the maximum?
Correct.
You have the square footage.
That's right. Well, actually, you could have a 4,000-square-foot lot, and if you want to put on eight hens, you're only allowed two based on the one per 2,000. If you want to put on more than two, then you have to get the petition.
Okay.
Just, just for my clarification, I don't have a very good idea of how big 5,000-square-feet is or 10,000-square-feet. Like, what's, what's average, and like, are there very many 12,000-square-foot lots that would have six automatically?
Probably, you'll see those more on the fringe of the city limits. Lots in the new subdivision over on Mountain, Mountain River Estates, I believe, most of those are 5,000, maybe 6,000. So, your, your sort of modern subdivision lot is probably in the 5 to 6 range.
Which translates into .10, .20 of an acre?
Does that mean you can have two and a half and just have the legs, or?
Actually, maybe like .14 or so, yeah.
And would that be the right leg or the left leg?
I just like drumsticks, so it doesn't matter.
Two chickens and a game hen.
The lots that were developed in the, let's say, from the 50s to the 80s were 100 by 150 square-foot lots, which gives you a lot more square footage.
Correct.
Than today's lot.
Correct. But even if you have a half-acre lot, the maximum is six, unless you decide to petition.
I think I'll go in the chicken business, I got a pretty good-sized lot.
As long as you invite us over for the barbecue, I'm good.
Well, I think this addresses everything we wanted it to do. I concur with Bob, the lady that has the coop out in the driveway between the garage and the street, she has X amount of days to correct that. Is that where you're coming from?
Right, exactly. Because, I mean, considering this update, her, her scenario is not consistent with several of the provisions of this, which would require her to request variance, which I would not support.
I guess I just have a little bit of a problem. I feel like that this is still open-ended to where, basically, we have no limit on hens.
No, you don't. However, currently, you have no limit on hens. I mean, right now, there is no limit to the amount of hens that can actually go on a piece of property. It is really subject to getting a petition signed off by the neighbors and no one objecting. By doing it this way, let's say you had 20 neighbors, if one of them objected, even if you were only having two hens, you're basically stuck. What we're doing at this juncture, I think, is simply saying, when you go beyond a reasonable threshold, then it, you know, a little bit more action is required.
The one option that you could do is amend it to include a not-to-accede.
That's hard to come up with a number, what that is.
Well, yeah, and I don't know what the system is now. I mean, do you have people that come in seeking 20 hens, or, I mean, I've never heard of it.
I don't think that's an issue. I think effectively, there will be an upper limit, and that'll be the tolerance of your neighbors.
Neighbors.
And, I mean, after all, that's what we want. We don't want the neighbors to feel like they've been stressed out by, by too many chickens, and they get to say, they get to say how many they're gonna tolerate.
That's what it does.
Okay, that answered, thank you. Any other questions?
Do you have chicken and ducks?
If they've got too many.
Thank you, Walt. Thanks, Walt. Okay, well, the city attorney, go ahead and read the ordinance bill.
Ordinance bill number 2014-8, ordinance number 2856, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter 6.16 of the Lebanon Municipal Code concerning the keeping of chickens within the city.
Entertained a motion?
I'd move for approval.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance bill number 2014-8. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance passes. Are we okay? Do we need a break, or can we plow through this?
I just want to go on record as saying that if, if someone has a five, I did vote for this, but if someone has a 5,000-foot lot, and they apply for a permit for 2.5 chickens, I think that seems cruel and unusual.
Duly noted, counselor. You're on record.
We only have 2.14 children.
Anyways, anybody request a break right now, or are we okay? We'll go ahead and move, we'll move through this. Dean Baugh, we know you're gonna talk quick and move fast, right? Number three.
Banking RFP proposal.
Any questions? So, so what we're coming forward with is an RFP for banking services contract. Due to our transparency, you know, we have come forward. We've been with Wells Fargo, they went out for the contract with Wells Fargo before I got there, so it's been about six years. We've now exercised our last extension with them, so we need to go out and get another contract with another bank. So, that's all this is doing, is you authorized us to go out for an RFP for banking services. It'll be brought back to you guys, I think it's, in February for approval, once we go through all this.
Okay, absolutely.
So, if there's no questions, that's staff reporting.
Questions?
Move for approval.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the banking RFP proposal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Dean.
Feedback?
Motion passes. Wow, oh, we did power through that. That was fast. City manager's report.
Yep, we got Ron.
Oh, no. Oh, God, Ron. You know, I was going so quick, I already checked you off, Ron. I'm sorry.
That I like to see. Why am I still here, then?
Back to the intake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. What we have before you tonight is an amendment to a contract with Corolla Engineers to continue our pursuit to the river, for a river intake off the South Saniam River. You can see from the proposal that's attached what all it includes. Some of the highlights that it includes, we'll get a little deeper into the site, i.e. the river itself, and make sure that there's no, no roadblocks there. Doesn't look like there is. It gets us our permitting, both preliminary and ending permits with the Corps of Engineers, DSL. And I should say that this is based on a nationwide permit. What's a nationwide permit? That's a, it's kind of a, I guess the best way to sum it up is it's, it's, it doesn't need separate review from a lot of other agencies. It doesn't get pulled out of the queue from an individual perspective, and there's a lot more scrutiny on an individual permit. This is all based on a nationwide permit, and we're still assuming that we meet the criteria. However, as with any of the federal regulatory agencies, they can change that and pull it out of the queue, and then we'd have to go through that. So, just as a point of clarification, this is all based on a nationwide permit, as opposed to an individual permit. to an individual permit, which is quite a bit more costly, and the cost comes from the time that it takes to go through it.
Ron, that means that those entities that ordinarily would have a say in the scheme of things would not be able to do that.
There's still a comment period, yes, but not to the extent as an individual permit. If we were doing something like building a dam across the South Saniam River, you can bet that we would have a lot of comments, so.
Yes.
So, it does get us the biological opinion. Coordination with the regulatory agencies obviously goes through this, and it gets us to about a 60% design. That's what this amendment does. You ask why 60%? Because the remaining portion of the design basically needs to be, it needs to be tied with the water plant, and they need to be doing both in simultaneous work to make sure that the pumps from the pump station out there match the pumps at the water treatment plant. So, this amendment only takes us to 60% design, but it does finalize the permits, again, assuming the nationwide permit. So, 522,000, that's a not to exceed. We've reviewed it, we've reviewed it with Corolla. I'm comfortable with what they've got there. We've got, I think, probably some of the best people in terms of working with the regulatory agencies as far as consultants, so I'm confident and hopeful that we can get through this process. With that, I can answer any questions. I should make one caveat, I've talked to Trey. The amendment, the way we had it set up was to amend the intake feasibility study. I think after talking to Trey, we would probably rather do an amendment to the existing design contract that we have with them, and it really, it's all coming from the same funding source, just contract law makes it a little clearer if we do it off of our main contract as opposed to the smaller contract we did with them with the feasibility study. So, that would be the one thing in your motion, should you choose to approve it, that we would ask that you would amend that piece to amend the actual design contract as opposed to this. So, with that, I can answer any questions. I know, it's, yeah.
What would happen here if we approved this and then Gary and Wes Hare get together and come to a settlement real quick?
It's called sunk cost. We lose it. We've got some mechanisms in place here to eliminate that as much as possible. The actual design of it is not going to take place until we, we're going at this full speed ahead, but very systematically, so that at any point in time, we can stop, and we haven't, I guess for lack of a better term, wasted any money. But that is an option, that is a possibility.
Why would we want to spend any money if in fact there could be a solution that circumvents spending money?
What is that? What does that look like?
I don't know.
I don't either. We could, obviously, you could wait and see what it looks like with Albany. That's an option.
That doesn't cost us anything, does it?
It costs you time.
Time.
Yeah, it costs you time. Yeah, that's...
Yeah, let me address that. I'm confident, Wayne, that we can address whatever, if there's a solution with Wes and the City of Albany, I'm confident that we can address that in a way that allows us to move forward with our main objective right now, which is the river intake. I don't, I don't really see, if anything, you know, that does give us some leverage, if something were to happen with the canal, suddenly it was indeed the more cost-effective way to go, our initial numbers certainly don't support that. So, we have really no reason to believe that going to the canal is the more cost-effective route. So, I would hate to see us, I hate to use this term, but tilting at windmills. But I've told Wes before that once we have hard numbers for going to the river, if at that point in time, City of Albany wants to give us the better deal, give it to us. I don't believe that would happen unless we had those other numbers about going to the river. I think the two are married together, and if we detach them, we lose that ability to compare. And I think that comparison is at the heart of any deal that we could come up with, with the City of Albany.
My concern is that if we don't come to a resolution and we go to intake out of the river, that canal is still going to cost us some money in some component. That's a fear I have.
Yeah, and...
I didn't want to go away.
You're correct. It'll still cost us money, but not to the extent that it could possibly now, when we take water out of it for our use. It will have an impact on us for maintenance related to our storm drainage. Beyond that, it's an open question, because, and I've said this to Wes several times, so this is not new, we, City of Lebanon, do not own the canal. We are not partners in ownership of the canal. We do not have ownership responsibilities for the canal. They do. They own it. We don't. I know I keep saying that, but there's a big difference there when he says, "We don't use probably as much water as you, Lebanon." What does that mean? Because he has ownership, we don't. So, he owns it, his city owns it, therefore, the major responsibility for its maintenance upkeep is with the owner. Any impact we have as a user needs to be quantified accurately, and then we have a responsibility to make good on what our impact is on the canal as a user, but not an owner.
We're a customer.
Yes, we're a customer, thank you. And there are probably, what, 19 other customers, 20, something to that magnitude.
There's a lot of other people that own the canal.
In one shape or form, have some use of that canal when it passes by their property. So, that's one of the questions that needs to be addressed if we come to a resolution with Albany, is we're one of 20, we want to know that if we're a customer, that other customers, from a point of equity, just pure equity, that other customers are being asked to pay their part also. I would hate to think that Lebanon ends up paying a portion of what other customers' impact is. So, those are all things that have to be dealt with, so...
And I think the other issue that, keeping this on the table, moving forward on the design process, getting the treatment plant organized, looking at the intake, then puts us in a position to be able to ask ourselves, are there other options for the stormwater? And ultimately, that canal is one customer option that we would have. So, I think, I think we have to move forward appropriately across all fronts in looking at all the options.
Yeah. We come back into Wayne's original point, yes, there still are expenses that we should expect with the canal, whether we take water out of it or not. It'll be different, it would be less if we're not taking water out of it and just putting water into it. But there still will remain a responsibility for us to...
Right, and I've made that, I've made that point earlier, and then again, again, tonight, that part of our work with Corolla and with our staff needs to be, make sure that we get a cradle to grave cost analysis on all of the issues. You know, you were pointing out stormwater and the other points that you made, which were consistent with the intent. So, it's all a part of the package. We can't isolate out any issue in our examination.
And I'd also stress, I think even what Counselor Bowen was saying earlier, is that these are separate issues. And while there may be some type of contribution that Lebanon would do because of the storm drain, I mean, I think we would have a very large disagreement with Albany on that issue, even because there's, I think there's a strong position that that impact is minimal, so...
And we're currently under no obligation. So, when you try and tie that storm drainage back into negotiation for a water plant, it doesn't, it doesn't work. So, Corolla is not, just so you're aware, Corolla is not looking at storm drainage.
Ah, no.
At all.
Well, that, maybe that's something that we need to do independently.
Yeah, and we could do that.
Yeah.
But, but I think at this point, at this juncture, you know, Albany's asked the question, we probably have prescriptive easements to drain there, but are we obligated to pay? Are we? I mean, from a technical, if you guys are impacting the canal, there's probably something we know. From an obligation, are we? So, we need to, we need to address that, and that's why we want to keep it separate.
Okay.
And to answer your question, Wayne, I mean, I understand where you're at, that's a lot of money to go forward with. We'll keep it as tight as we can keep it, but we're not going to know the answers to these questions until we go out there and get in front of the agencies. We're not going to know until we dig deeper into this. But keep in mind, this amendment is not a study. This amendment is Lebanon moving forward to a river intake. It's not a, we're going to get a theoretical something at the end of this, we're going to have 60% design drawings and a permit to go do the project, so we're moving forward.
Then, I guess, Gary, I would need your comments related to the relationship we're going to have with Albany and the study, the voided study. How that relates to the river intake.
I'm sorry, I missed your question.
We're going to share, Albany is offered to pay for some study.
Right.
Ron is telling me this is not a study at all.
Right.
You're going to have those costs at the end of the day.
And that's one of the issues that Wes's team and my team have to grapple with, is the fact that he sees it as a study, we see it as a project. I think there's a potential bridge there.
That's...
And I'm getting to a point where I'm getting into my negotiating what I want to say to them, but I think there's a way that if they want to shoot us a better price, if you will, at some point, I think there's a way they can do that in analyzing data that our project produces, and then using that data to say, okay, Lebanon, going to the river is going to cost you this much, your engineers have told you that, but we can do the canal for you for this much. I don't think there's really a train wreck there. I think that's something that can easily be bridged. You're right, he sees it as a study, we have a project, but I think there's a way to hybrid onto our project to allow them to participate in as far as giving us a better option in their mind, and for us to look at it. I mean, I think that puts us, that puts us in the driver's seat, if you will.
I like the fact that it uses us sort of the hammer.
I'm concerned with respect to the approach that they might take in, maybe an inappropriate term, but it's the only one that comes to mind, lowballing the price to us, to buy the business, like with any decision that this council makes, potentially could be overwritten by a future council. I think one of the things that I would be concerned about in moving away from our own intake would be the potential impact of a future council decision in Albany that could change the price unilaterally and could have an impact upon us down the road, where we might give up a fixed cost that they could potentially override.
Right, and the answer to that, Bob, is in the IGA. Now, it's not enough for us simply to get a better price from the City of Albany. We need, and Albany wants this, too. Both parties want a new IGA. And from our perspective as City of Lebanon, that IGA needs to be fairly seamless in its implementation in regards to our ability to draw water out of the canal and how we're charged for it. I, you know, illustrated here tonight, we're arguing about one-third, two-thirds, and whether that's appropriate. Those sorts of arguments shouldn't go forward. Whatever agreement we have in the future needs to be different in such a manner that if we're going to draw water out of the canal, it no longer, now or in the future, impinges on our ability to draw water out of the canal. It very much does right now, because we would be, we would be probably breaking ground we hadn't already very soon to build a new plant. But City of Albany required us to delay that project.
Yes.
If we get an IGA in place, I want you to know, I'm going to be analyzing anything I bring to you to make sure that we have the ability to assure that those sorts of scenarios don't come again, and you're going to have the ability to see if I got it right, ultimately. But make no mistake, a better price isn't the end of the story here. There needs to be a better price with a better IGA.
Right.
And if those two things can be achieved, then we probably have the basis for an overall agreement, but we have to have both.
My gut tells me that, and I could be wrong, but my instinct is that Albany's going to look for this, a comprehensive package, rolling in storm, rolling in intake, and I just don't think that's something we're going to want to entertain. I feel like we've been leasing this jalopy for the last 20 years, and it's time for us to finally make an investment in our infrastructure for ourselves. It's time to, I almost had the firehouse term come out, it's time to do a gut check and come up with a down payment for the car. And I kind of feel like Albany is the guy in the sales manager's office telling us, "Look, I'm going to give you this great deal, and it's going to be, your payment's only going to be, you know, really low, and it's going to be great." "Well, yeah, but it's going to be at 20% interest for 20 years." And I would much rather, at this point in time, invest our taxpayer money in our own infrastructure that we will control from here on out, and we will have ownership of it. We'll get the five-year loan for 2%, and we'll walk away after five years owning this.
Well, make no mistake about your manager's position. I very much want to go to the river. I'm sold on that idea. I think it is our solution, and the burden is going to be on the City of Albany to show us a better way if they believe it exists. But as far as my role as your manager, I've worked closely with Ron and his staff in looking at all the issues. I think Albany's got a tall order in front of them to give us something that's going to work better for us in the long run, but that's their burden. And I guess all what I've suggested tonight is that I give them a chance to talk to us about that, and if they're able to pull something out of the hat that none of us expects, well, let's talk about it at that point. But as far as where I think we're going, I think we're going to the river.
Yep.
I have a question related to our citizens that are along that canal, both sides 16 miles of citizens' property. And they look to us for, I mean, they complained to us about the canal and it's eating away their sidewalk, their driveway, their yard, and we don't own that.
Don't forget our bridges.
We don't own that canal, but they're not getting any satisfaction out of Albany for repair or compensation for loss of property. They raise the rate of flow due to their power plant, or they lower it, or whatever, that erodes the bank of the canal. Those are our citizens that I'd like to see some protection for.
And I think there's an opportunity as far as the storm drainage issue, that, right now, understand that the IGA we have with the City of Albany really doesn't address storm drainage.
No.
Separate issue, we really don't have an agreement right now. If we negotiate one, it has to be a two-way street, and I think it's an opportunity, while we may end up needing to agree that we have some financial responsibility as far as our storm drainage goes, it's also an opportunity for us to address some of those issues, Wayne, I think. for us to address some of those issues, Wayne, I think. So, you know, going forward, I'm hoping that if I'm going to bring you an agreement on storm drainage, that it'll be comprehensive to address some of those issues, too. Because when we're talking about storm drainage, we're talking about maintenance of the canal. Because their concern is, what wear and tear does our storm drainage put on their canal? Well, that addresses this issue of the impact it has on adjacent properties. So I think there's a way to bring this all together, but we'll see.
I move for the approval of the amendment.
I'll second it.
It's been moved.
We do need to have it as amended, amending the original. How did you want to format that?
Basically, the amendment would be to the original design contract, and it would be actually amendment, I believe, number two, but that's irrelevant. Basically, as long as it's amended to the original contract, we'll change the wording for Gary to sign.
Do you have a second on that?
Bob?
Yeah.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the amendment for the design on the water treatment plant river intake.
Wayne, do you feel like you got your questions answered?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ron, sorry I missed you. Sorry I missed you.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, now city managers' report.
All right, well, ladies and gentlemen, in any given month, there's lots of things I do, and I'm going to hit some high points here, but, I mean, just in terms of formal scheduled meetings, month of October, I had 47. And I think probably the impromptu and the informal probably double that amount. So, no, I'm just going to hit the high points here, but other than that, there's a lot going on. Probably what defined my month more than anything was the vision. We started the month with interviews of the various consulting firms that the vision committee, the steering committee was looking at. We interviewed them, we assessed which ones should be recommended to you. There was some preparation of the contract after that. Once you folks approved the contract, then there was stuff with their liability insurance that I had to do before I could get the notice to proceed to them. There were then preparatory meetings leading up to the meetings they had last week with the department heads, the steering committee, and then also with you. Also involving the vision was preparations for the State of the City address, which was delivered on October 31st at the Chamber of Commerce lunch at the hospital. The mayor and I both kind of teamed that address, my part was the vision. Other than the vision, I attended the tree and park committee this past month to address this idea of a community garden. I wanted to introduce that idea to the committee and judge their receptiveness to helping develop a proposal, because I really felt that's where this sort of thing needs to begin, as far as within this formal city structure. They were very amenable to that. I'll be at this next meeting this month, along with several of the community supporters for a community garden, we're going to start this planning process for the garden. Wayne arranged for me a great tour of the Boys and Girls Club, and then been working with Ron and his folks on and off through the month on the whole canal issue, as you might imagine. So those were kind of the high points, and if you have any questions about any of that, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay, seen then. Items from council?
I guess I'm real excited on my part about the visioning, and I'm real curious as to the focus groups, what the citizens are going to say those should be. And I guess we will have some review of those and say, and advertising that we get.
There's at least two check-ins from here, and then a final one, so I think you have at least three more touchpoints with the consulting team. You know, outside of this meeting, though, I mean, there's probably other opportunities for you also.
Yes.
Okay, Trey?
Did you want to? I just wanted to thank Ron and Rob and their staff and Gary for, I know it's been a ton of work with this water issue, on top of the current water issues and billing issues that went through the Water Department the last couple of months. So I really just want to publicly thank them and their staff for how they've dealt with it professionally and efficiently. It's been excellent, so, thank you.
I just wanted to comment, as a proud member of the Lebanon Optimist Club, I just took a little bit of umbrage with Mr. Whitlatch, saying there's been no visible progress for the gazebo. I think there's been some visible progress with the gazebo this month.
At the time, you wrote the problem.
And it looks beautiful.
It does look good. It does. Do you have anything, Bob?
No.
Robert? And just one quick thing, we have our light display this year, the Christmas lights will be going on Thanksgiving evening, and Saturday night after Thanksgiving, we'll have a Polar Express Frozen Night for the kids with all kinds of special music, and bring your kids and dress those little girls up, and come on over. So with that, any public comments? We have no public left. Items from the press? Seriously.
Cold in here.
Okay, with that, we'll adjourn.